I'd like to call our successor agency meeting to order. And at this time, I'll ask for a roll.
Vice Chairman Barajas.
Here.
Member Romero.
Here.
Member Cortez.
Here.
Member Molinari.
Here.
Chairman Higginian.
And I'm here. Thank you. So we'll now move to a statement of public oral communication.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the successor agency, members of the public interested in addressing the successor agency on any agenda item or topic must fill out a form provided at the door and turn it in prior to the beginning of oral communications, which would be right now. The form does not need to be submitted for public hearing items. We have none. This also includes any request for public oral communications on items listed for closed session, which we also have no closed session tonight. Speakers wishing to address the successor agency on an item that is not on the agenda will be called upon in the order that their speaker card was received. Those persons not accommodated during this first 30-minute period will have an opportunity to speak under oral communications continued. Be aware, maximum time allotted for individual speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. Please show courtesy to others and direct all your comments to the chair. We have no speaker cards for the successor agency. We do have two items on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, items five and six.
Okay, so we'll now move to the approval of the agenda.
Should I poll the successor agency for those items?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barajas.
I have none.
Member Romero.
I had my questions answered earlier. I'm good. Thank you.
Member Cortez.
I have none.
Member Molinari.
I have none.
And Chairman Higginian.
And I have none.
Would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve items five and six.
Oh, a second. There's a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, nos, or abstentions. That would be so ordered.
It would be appropriate to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, Your Honor.
There's a first and a second. We are now adjourned. And now, at this time, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. And at this time, I will ask for a roll call.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Here.
Councilmember Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Molinari.
Here.
And Mayor Higginian.
And I'm here. So at this time, it's a tradition where we have an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. We were scheduled to have the Reverend from United Methodist Church, but he was unable to attend. So I'm going to ask our illustrious city manager to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. For those who are willing and able, if you'll bow your heads with me, Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this evening. We pray for great wisdom. Father, this evening for our council members, we pray for peace and joy and love for all the citizens of Monobello. And we thank you, Lord, for every day protecting us and, Father, showing us your grace and mercy. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask our youth commissioners if all three can please come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right, so place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible) apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we will move on to our presentations. So at this time, I'm going to step down. By now, I'm sure Mike Davis is wondering why so many of his friends and relatives and bandmates are here this evening. And I'm glad that George was able to fool you and tell you that you were here to lobby for a city matter, which I'm still shocked that you went along with it all this time. Thank you. Thank you. And, Mike, in case you didn't notice, there's an agenda that's left in the back for the public, and you are part of the agenda as a special presentation where we want to recognize you for your achievement and, you know, being a Monobello boy and how you have become a rising star in our community and how you have not shied away from Monobello. You're still part of this community. And I have a bio here that I want to read, and if it's incorrect, you can handle this with your brother later, okay? And because a couple of your friends had to correct a couple of the facts, so I don't know. It's okay, Brian. Mike Davis was born in Monobello, California, and attended local area schools, eventually graduating from Monobello High School in 1982. Growing up in Monobello, Mike played for the Monobello Junior Baseball Association, where he was coached by his grandfather, Leo Ramos, and his dad, Dennis Davis. His father was a Monterey Park police officer and his mother, an accountant for a doctor's office. Music was always a part of the Davis family home. They loved to listen to country, blues, and rock music. In junior high school, Robert Morales was a big influence on Mike, picking up the bass guitar. His early jam sessions included The Beatles and ELO. Shortly after Mike attended Monobello High School, he formed a band named Cyrus Rain with his best friend, John Natisch. Leonard Alvidres and Mark Benson were also his bandmates. Mike graduated from Monobello High School in '82 and shortly thereafter joined Lizzie Borden, where he would embark on an amazing musical journey that would last for many years. At age, at the age of 19, he recorded his first album and went on the road for a world tour. And at one point, they toured for three years straight. Mike recorded two more albums with Lizzie Borden. Most recently, Lizzie Borden was ranked number 71 of the top 100 hair metal bands by VH1.[408.12][408.12](Laughter). Well, we got a little video to play. We'll see. While Mike was a rock star touring the world with his band, he was exposed to many cuisines that would spark a new interest: cooking food. Mike turned from a full-time musician to a chef at Santa Anita Racetrack, working with Matthew Pike and Jose Rodriguez. Mike has been featured in the Pasadena Star News for his culinary skills. Mike has never left the music scene. He now runs two lifestyles: one as a musician and the second as an entrepreneur of the Love Hate Bar here in East Los Angeles, just a stone throw away from Monobello. His son Neil Davis manages the kitchen with him. Mike has recorded two albums with Rob Halford, the frontman for the legendary group Judas Priest, who's also known as the Metal God. Most recently, Mike recorded an album with his latest band, Death Dealer, and it's to be released very soon. Mike and the band just returned from a European tour. Mike also plays in another genre of music. It's alternative, and he's been a member of Dramarama for many years. If you have not heard Dramarama, you must not listen to the radio, because it's played, their music is played over and over again on K-Rock. And I'd like to mention that the singer is here, John Easdale.[497.84][497.84](Applause). We have a star-studded event here. We've got Mike Davis here, John Easdale here, and I see Bob Nalbandian's here from Inside Metal. Thank you for coming.
And I'm not done, Julio Baez, of course.[515.79][515.79](Laughter).
And one of our very own from Monobello, Frankie DeVita from KLOS.[522.04][522.04](Applause). Who is no stranger, she is the daughter of former Mayor Kathy Salazar.[531.16][531.16](Applause). I always knew as a kid Lizzie Borden had a connection to Monobello, and I always wanted to meet Mike Davis, since I was a bass player, too. Years later, I actually met Mike Davis at an L.A. Kings hockey game. And since then, we've been very good friends. I actually have known his brother a lot longer, and I've been impressed by his appreciation for Van Halen. And we've shared a tiny stage together.[563.61][563.61](Laughter). It is with great pride that today we recognize Mike for who he is, what he has accomplished, and what he is still capable of doing. Would you please welcome Mike Davis?[578.41][578.41](Applause). We have a short little intro to who you are for those who are not familiar with the legendary Mike Davis of Monobello, and then we've got something for you, too. So we'll start with, we've got some pictures and some videos. Do we have audio?[607.82][607.82](Laughter). We usually conduct political stuff here and civic stuff here. It's not much of a studio. Yeah.[619.29][619.29](Laughter).
That's our latest video from our U-Grap.
This is, it's muted. This is actually, there we go.
If you like fire, you'll like this.[635.04][635.04](Laughter).
And this is the one I really like a lot. This is where Mike, this little argument between VH1 and what your band is considered to be in the 80s.
What did you find?[696.11][696.11](Laughter).
It's pretty interesting, actually. Here we go. This is back in the mid-'80s. This is, this is, this is great right here.
If you didn't know I played bass, you wouldn't recognize me.
No, I actually had to call Mark Gannon to confirm. That's really him in the video, right? This is 1984, right?
No, '87.
'87. That was him in the middle, the three guys. There he is again.
If you see hair, that's me.
And just remember that when Mike is out touring the world, he puts Monobello on the map. And, you know, all your friends here are so proud of you, including myself.[776.11][776.11](Applause). So we have a proclamation here from the City of Monobello. Mike Davis, Monobello's original rock star.[796.00][796.00](Applause). Whereas it is with great pleasure that the city council, the City of Monobello, does hereby commend and recognize Mike Davis for his success and contribution to the music industry in the genre of heavy metal, hard rock, and alternative. And whereas since 1983, Mike Davis has embarked on this amazing journey to entertain music enthusiasts, toured the world with several artists, and fulfilled his dream of becoming an accomplished musician and rock star. And whereas we thank Mike Davis for putting Monobello on the map and making his family and friends extremely proud of what he has accomplished, for staying close to the Monobello community, and for promoting his hometown pride. Whereas we wish him success with his latest venture as an entrepreneur and chef of the Love Hate Rock Bar, an eastside venue for rock music enthusiasts and connoisseurs of delicious food. And now, therefore, I, Jack Higginian, Mayor of the City of Monobello, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby offer our sincere appreciation to Mike Davis, Monobello's Okay, so this isn't over yet. I actually, I'm actually going to ask you to introduce your family, but I'm also going to give you an opportunity to take a photo with your entire circle of friends that are here.[894.94][894.94](Applause). I also want to take this opportunity, if you will, give a very big round of applause for a very courageous member of our audience who had his 18th chemotherapy treatment yesterday. That's Mark Gannon. Mark, we're all with you, Mark.[911.11][911.11](Applause). Your friends all love you. Another Monobello boy, still lives in town. We love that. And Mark, we're with you, okay? So, Mike, why don't you introduce your family, and then you could take a big group photo with your friends?
Sure.
Born at Beverly Hospital.
Absolutely. 1964.[936.56][936.56](Applause).
That completes it, right? Thanks, Jersey.
Okay, that was one of the details that his brother wasn't sure about.
Yeah, we're going to have to talk about that.[948.43][948.43](Laughter). Well, it starts here with my fucking beautiful mother.[952.19][952.19](Laughter).
The rock star for you.[958.81][958.81](Laughter). Mark, Mike, you're not on stage, so.[966.31][966.31](Laughter).
I'm sorry. I just get excited sometimes. My mom, Kathy Davis.[975.06][975.06](Applause). My brother Brian.[983.06][983.06](Applause). A handful and then some. And the kid hiding in the back.[990.23][990.23](Applause). Yeah, so I don't know. I'm kind of at a loss, Mr. Jack here. But, you know, obviously, this is overwhelming as it gets, you know, to have something like this happen. And there's so many musicians. I mean, the Dramaramas, I mean, come on.[1015.00][1015.00](Laughter). Almost 20 years with Dramarama. And then, Mr. Mark Benkachia hiding in the back there.[1026.56][1026.56](Applause). He's the one who told me to shave my chocolate mustache and be a real rock star. So I think that really, that's the guy you got to blame for this. Yeah. You know, all of you, thank you so much. This is like a lifelong, I haven't really, I'm lost for words. I mean, so many great people. And it's all about support, you know? Support live music, support local music, local music, you know?[1057.13][1057.13](Applause). You know, people that actually get a guitar and sit in their room and learn how to play it, you know? The drums, the bass, you know? I mean, there's a lot of new technology, but, you know, the organic technology is still something that I think is one of the greatest things that we need to cherish and to write songs and to, you know, talk to people and write words on a piece of paper. And, you know, it's nothing you do by yourself. You do this with people, and this is why I'm so blessed.[1095.43][1095.43](Applause).
I wanted to add that Mike isn't the only one who's actually become an accomplished musician from Monobello. We've had a few other rock stars, but there's only one Mike who's stuck around in the community and who's still very well-rooted over here. We've had Jack Russell from Great White, we've had Jimmy Deanda and Mark Torian from the Bullet Boys, who, Jimmy Deanda is now with Lynch Mob. Lot of rock stars out of Monobello, but only one, but only one, only one still spends time in Monobello and is part of this community. That's Mike Davis. Thank you, Mike.[1140.58][1140.58](Applause). So if all the friends and family want to come on up and take a big picture with Mike, please do that right now. Let's do that.[1151.33][1151.33](Laughter). Yeah. Let's do, let's drop these. Let's drop these.
Well, did you see him with the?
We're going to drop these right now, so we can.
Hold it up here.
Oh, we'll get the sis.[1168.76][1168.76](Laughter). Go down? Are you going to go down, Art?
Look at, I feel. Come on. You're going to hide. Come up here.
Oh, okay. What if I go in between your legs and be locked?
All right.
Congratulations.
Where's the proclamation?
Everybody turn to your side. Turn to your side.
Horns up.
Oh, you get yourself locked in. We got it. We got it. We just locked.
I got you.
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 You know Mike, right?
Yeah. I had him on my show.
Oh, okay.
I forgot your earpiece, bro.
That's all I know.
Yeah.
I should have brought you.
Yeah.
Christina.
Huh? You don't, you don't remember Brian either?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is all.
We need to.
And we have to move the rock and roll party outside.[1563.73][1563.73](Laughter).
Our next presentation is the High-Speed Rail Authority.
Good evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for inviting us here to give you an informational presentation on high-speed rail. I guess it might be appropriate to say, and now for something completely different. We have, again, a brief presentation on the status of the California High-Speed Rail project for you today, and we are working on our section here in the vicinity from Los Angeles to Anaheim. And so we wanted to make sure that the council was informed of what the status of the project is and what our plans are moving forward. So the first thing that we like to talk about is the situation that we face here in the state of California and why a policy decision was made to bring high-speed rail service to the state of California. And when you take a look at the demographic challenges that we are going to face moving forward, you can see that we definitely need to address our transportation system now in order to be ready in the future as we begin to add population to the state. Right now, in the state of California, we have 38 million people. We are, based on projections, going to be adding 12 million people to our population by 2050. We also know and understand the importance of the ability to move people and goods effectively and efficiently around, that that is really, that type of commerce is a foundation of a successful economy. And so we need to start planning now to accommodate that population growth and to make sure that we can continue to move our people and goods around the state in a very fast and efficient manner. And of course, we know that here in Southern California, that's already a challenge for us. We already have a considerable amount of congestion on our highways, so much so that congestion and traffic in Southern California is actually a character in movies and in written word. And so we need to take a look at that and how we support and make sure people can continue to move around well on our highways. We also have congestion in our airways. The route between Southern California and the Bay Area is the busiest airline short-haul market in the country, and there is considerable congestion there. And we also have congestion on our railways. Our railways are sharing the load of carrying goods out of the ports, certainly that are important overall to the regional economy, but they're also carrying many of our people. And the Los Angeles Corridor here is actually the second busiest Amtrak corridor in the country, our 351 miles that go from San Diego to San Luis Obispo. And at the same time that that corridor is carrying all those people on Amtrak, it's also carrying many, many people on MetroLink, and it's also carrying many, many of our goods in and out of the ports. And so we face a challenge basically moving forward. We also, as a state, need to address our air quality. We also, as a state, need to address our air quality challenges. And we know that here in the Southern California basin, we would like to have cleaner air. We would like to raise our children in an environment where we have cleaner air. And so by looking at transportation alternatives, opportunities to move people from fossil-fuel burning choices in transportation to non-fossil-fuel burning choices in transportation, like all-electric high-speed rail, we have the opportunity to look forward to a cleaner-air future. And we also wanna be good stewards of the public money. And high-speed rail, as a service, is the most effective way to move people in distances from 1 to 600 miles. On a per-person, per-mile cost basis, it is the most efficient mode of transportation at those distances. And of course, we know that across the state of California, we certainly have those kinds of distances, and we have an opportunity to take a look at new linkages between cities and locations when we have a fast and efficient mode of transportation. We are building an all-electric 800-mile railroad for the city, for the state of California. That is what we've embarked upon in order to address those challenges. And again, this is a transportation choice. This is another transportation choice for the state of California. This is not a mandate, but this is a system that can come in and provide additional support to our other existing systems and provide our traveling public with additional transportation choices. We have a Phase 1 system on this map. It's the part in navy blue going from San Francisco down to Anaheim. That's about 500 miles. And then we have two Phase 2 extensions up to Sacramento and down to San Diego. And you can also see on this map planned high-speed rail service that's being brought to fruition by other agencies, not by the California High Speed Rail, that will eventually enable us to have a high-speed rail link to Las Vegas as well. Sorry about that, it got excited. So, this is the Southern California section that I am overseeing. We have a regional office here in, at MWD on campus at Los Angeles Union Station. And so we are overseeing about 330 miles of that 800-mile system. And you can see that here, our area basically goes from Bakersfield in the north all the way down to San Diego in the south. And so our Phase 1 section is Bakersfield to Anaheim. Our Phase 2 section is Los Angeles Union Station to San Diego. And you can see here on this slide some of the travel times between the different locations where we would have stations. And this is really a remarkable change over how quickly people can move between those particular locations right now. On this train, you would be able to travel from Palmdale to Burbank in 15 to 20 minutes. Right now, at rush hour, that's a two-hour drive. On the train, you would be able to get from Burbank to Los Angeles Union Station in about 10 minutes. That's a reduction, that basically reduces that travel time in half. And on this train, you would be able to get from Los Angeles Union Station to Anaheim in 30 minutes. And depending on the time of day, that is a, that reduces, again, in half the travel time for that particular trip. So it's basically about moving people faster than they're able to move right now. And in order to bring this project to California, we took a look at different types of opportunities we would have to begin addressing the transportation challenges that we have here that will also ultimately help us bring high-speed rail to the state. And so we have invested hundreds of millions of dollars of the high-speed rail money in local projects that are happening right now, so that we can provide additional safety to the traveling public right now, and we can also provide additional connectivity to the traveling public right now, so that we can begin to prime the pump. Basically, the better our existing transit system is right now, the more riders we have on that system right now, the more riders we will ultimately have on the high-speed rail system. So this is a good investment. We have invested to help MetroLink install Positive Train Control, which is the system that basically allows every train to know where every other train is, and it prevents those trains from running into one another. MetroLink is going to bring that system online. It's the first in the country in terms of a major system. And so our traveling public will now have the opportunity to have that extra safety consideration. We have also invested in new locomotives for MetroLink. These are Tier 4 locomotives. They're quieter, they're faster, they can pull more cars, and they also have an 85% reduction in the greenhouse gas emissions. That's a good deal for Southern California and for those trains that are going through and around Southern California and the communities that they travel through. We also invested monies in specific Southern California projects, like the Regional Connector Project that connects all of our LA County Light Rail Systems together underneath the city of LA. So you will now be able to get on the Blue Line and travel directly without getting off the Blue Line, getting on the subway, getting back on either the Gold Line or East Side. You would now be able to travel directly from Long Beach to Pasadena, the East Side, or to the West Side, as we're bringing, basically, the Expo Line online, and vice versa. So those are a number of projects that we're investing in, and those projects are coming to fruition right now. We are also looking at further investments in projects like grade separations and the Regional Interconnector Project at LA Union Station. Right now, LA Union Station is a dead-end station. All the trains have to come in and pull out on the same set of tracks, and it takes a long time to get those trains in and out of that station. And then when those trains get back on the main line, sometimes they miss their slots, and it creates a lot of on-time performance issues. We are partnering with LA Metro and will ultimately pay for half of the construction of run-through tracks, tracks that will go out across the 101 and connect back into the rail corridor, so that we can actually take our trains directly into LA Union Station from the south and then just drive them directly out to the north without having to have them deal with the bottleneck right now. We are also looking at early grade separation project opportunities. One of those key locations is at Rosecrans Marquardt, which is here in the Gateway Cities area. That is currently an at-grade crossing with five streets coming in and the train tracks crossing at a skew. We are, again, partnered with LA Metro to devise a grade separation scheme for that location, so that the cars and the trains are not crossing at the same level, thus providing a lot of traffic benefits, certainly to automotive, as well as to the trains, and a very, very good increase in safety, because those at-grade crossings can be safety hazards. One of the great things about a grade separation, although they are very complex projects to design correctly, when the train is grade-separated, they don't need to slow down and honk their horns at that location as they pass. So that is typically seen as an advantage in the long term when that project is built. Here, basically, is our Los Angeles to Anaheim section. It is 30 miles. We currently have three stations that we would plan on this section: Los Angeles Union Station, a midpoint station, which we're still evaluating the location of, and then a terminus location in Anaheim. Right now, we have been in discussions with both Norwalk-Santa Fe Springs and the city of Fullerton in terms of the potential to locate a station in one of those two locations. One of the key tenets of what we're doing here is we are following an existing rail corridor. This is our low-sand corridor that I spoke about earlier, so we already have a public right-of-way set aside for train travel through this area, and it's about 100 feet wide up and down this particular corridor. And so we are working very, very closely with local cities, with our fellow rail operators to design our system so that it can fit within that 100-foot right-of-way, so that we can minimize the impacts. We are also working very closely with our rail partners to make sure that as we do that, we would be improving the quality of that corridor in general, upgrading it so that some of the trains could travel faster, and reconstructing some of the tracks, so that, basically, we would have new, modern rails in this corridor. And that's a good deal, because the new, modern rails are typically much quieter than the older models. And so we are really looking at this as an opportunity to improve the mobility up and down this corridor, not only for high-speed rail, but also for our other passenger rail services. And as we embark upon this project, the authority is committed to a very, very rigorous public outreach and information program. We want to make sure that everybody is informed about what we're doing, and they have an opportunity to provide their input in what we're doing. And the key tenet, basically, of this process, you can see up here, is the fact that we're looking for a balance. The best project that we can build is gonna be a balance between the project objectives, which are the things that the system needs to do. It needs to be safe, it needs to be fast, we need to put stations in locations where we can have a lot of people take the train in order to make sure that we can raise the revenue to pay for the train, those types of things. The environmental resources, those are our natural resources, right? Our watersheds, our LA River, our plants and our animals. And our natural resource agencies, basically, protect those, and we work with them to come up with the best design. And then finally, and importantly, and not by accident, the community is on the top of this, because we need to sit down with each of our communities as we work through this project and talk to them about what is important to them, the character of their community, and the way that we can best protect that character. And then we take all of that information, all of the things the train needs to do, all of the environmental resource constraints, and the community character and the information that we learn there, and we come up with, basically, the best possible approach that balances those, so that we can get the best possible project built. And one of the things that we're working very, very carefully to do and will be working on as we move forward is looking for opportunities to deliver value-added to the communities along the corridor. As we're bringing this project to fruition, what other projects are being designed and built in the immediate area? What other opportunities do we have to partner with other types of activities, so that every dollar we invest in our project pays us back in $2 or $3 in return? And so I've listed a few of those options up here. Some of the things might be adaptive reuse. If there is a location where we would need to acquire right-of-way, what happens to that parcel when we're done? What do we plan, as a group, to do with that particular parcel? Watershed improvements. We will be designing drainage for this corridor. Are there ways for us to design that drainage and treat it and inject it into our groundwater system, so that we can recharge in different ways than we're recharging right now? Opportunities for access and mobility. Are there other projects planned to be constructed in the corridor that might be planned to be constructed either a few years before or a few years after we would be constructing? Can we align those schedules, so we only construct once in that location, in order to minimize the impact, right, to the community around us? And potentially realize a cost savings on all the projects by bringing multiple parties together? Those types of things. And then finally, of course, this is a multi-billion-dollar project, and so there will be many, many jobs associated with it. We estimate that as we come into full construction, we will be creating about 67,000 jobs a year up and down the state. We have a 30% small-business goal for all of our contracting and a community benefits agreement that, basically, allows us the opportunity to bring folks into apprenticeship programs and train them for good jobs in the future, particularly folks that may have barriers to work, single parents, emancipated minors from the foster system, and folks of that nature. And so this is the process that we're gonna be embarking upon right here. You can see at the top, that's the standard project development process that these big projects go through. You do an alternative analysis, where you develop, basically, route concepts, ideas for where you would put the train and how you would address your challenges. Then we go out and we talk to all of our stakeholders about these to get feedback, so that we can further refine them. And ultimately, we then begin our technical studies that are required of the environmental process. We release a draft environmental document that encapsulates all of this. That goes out to a hearing. We, again, get much input into that, and then we prepare a final document for circulation. At the bottom here, we've listed a community line right there. And while we're doing these things to develop the project, we'd also like to be doing the things to identify those opportunities for some of the things I spoke about on the last slide, the groundwater recharge, or aligning project schedules to build multiple projects at the same time, to identify those things that would be important in each community that we might be able to do at the same time that we're ultimately doing this project. And finally, in order to do this, again, I said that we are committed to a very, very strong public engagement process. We are, at this point, interested in going out and consulting the public and getting that feedback on the ideas that we have right now. Some of those ideas, in terms of what types of things we should be looking at for those extra added-value projects. And so we are planning to start those community meetings from the Los Angeles to Anaheim section in the middle of October, on October 15th, in the city of Anaheim. And then we would move on, on the 17th in Pico Rivera, on the 19th in Commerce, 21st in Norwalk, the 26th in Fullerton, and the 28th in Buena Park. So these are all opportunities for the public to engage. We also run one of our meetings as a bilingual meeting, so the entire meeting will be presented in both Spanish and English. And we also do a live webcast to enable people to, basically, from the comfort of their own home, dial in and see what, and learn about what we are planning. So that's it. That's the end of my presentation.
Well, thank you for the presentation. And I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions, to ask them now.
I'd like to just get a clarification. Several years ago, when the LA to Anaheim route was being discussed, there were several alternative routes that affected our immediate area. One was through Monterey Park, Rosebee, the other on the south, far-south end of Montebello and the south of the Santa Fe rail line in the industrial area of Montebello and Commerce. Are those routes still part of your outreach meetings, or will that be discussed?
So the specific route that we're looking at right now, or the specific corridor that we're looking at right now, is the exact low-sand corridor. We are looking at siding the train within, next to, essentially, the existing tracks right there, right now. There's about 100 feet of right-of-way all the way down this particular corridor, and so we are not looking at taking it in any other direction right now. We believe that by routing it within that existing corridor, that is the way to make it the most minimally impactful to the public. And while it is a really important transportation improvement that we believe we're bringing, we also wanna minimize those impacts.
And the corridor is...
It is, it is, right now, where the BNSF runs. It comes out of LA Union Station, basically, along the LA River. It crosses the river at Redondo Junction, just south of the maintenance facility. It crosses the river at Redondo Junction, just south of the maintenance facility for Amtrak, and then it goes through Vernon, and then it goes through Commerce, and then it continues down. So, this is the existing rail corridor that you have right now where your MetroLink service is operating along, down to Anaheim and Irvine.
So, that's a route that's further south of what was proposed that time would be?
It's the BNSF.
Yes.
That's the line that goes through, that's the one where Amtrak runs right now?
Yes, correct. That is where your Surfliner service is running right now.
I just would like to clarify something, Michelle. The blue, it says here, is elevated, and that's running through Vernon up to Commerce? That'll be elevated?
Correct.
And then the green, and it looks like it's partially at-grade in the Commerce-Pico Rivera area?
Yes. So, and again, I want to stress that these are route concepts right now that we're taking out. This is not a final design at this point. We've spent a good amount of time taking a look at how to make the project the most minimally impactful, but then also to be respectful based on what we know of the communities. And so, it's a trade-off with the aerial versus the at-grade, certainly, but one of the things that we are learning as we go through and work on this project all over the state is, you know, where we're going by households and residential communities, there's typically an interest for that train being down on the ground rather than having it go by them in the air. And so, that's one of the things we've been looking at. This is a change, I think, also from some of the previous plans that we had showed. I think we were showing at aerial much further down through the corridor originally, even going over some of our major freeways, and from four, five years ago. And so, we've spent quite a bit of time looking at how we can make it much narrower, bring it down so that we can go underneath our freeways instead of go over our freeways to minimize that visual impact.
And you will be helping small businesses and minority, or women-owned businesses as well, it says here at least?
Yeah. So, we have, in 2012, our board established a 30% small business contracting goal for everything we do. That includes then a 10% disabled, or disadvantaged business allocation, and a 3% disabled veteran allocation. Right now, we have over 200 small businesses working on the program statewide. We have 82 small businesses from Southern California working on the project right now. We also, actually, a couple of my colleagues here both are helping me, and they represent small businesses from Southern California. And we also have over 30 disabled veteran small businesses working for us right now. So, the program is underway. It is much, much more than a mere suggestion. I know I get asked that a lot about a small business program. You know, I track that every day on all of my contracts, so my teams need to deliver that.
It's interesting that this Los Angeles to Las Vegas route has resurfaced again. In recent articles, the folks that are working on it contend that they have 60% of the right-of-way and funds available, and they may start construction as soon as 2017. Is that, again, wishful thinking, or is it actually reality? I know they've been talking to you folks about sharing some of the right-of-ways that you've been looking at.
So, they're a private company, Express West. They environmentally cleared Victorville to Las Vegas for high-speed. That's been cleared for a couple of years now, and they've been in discussions with a lot of folks about taking it to the next step. They recently announced, of course, that they had reached an agreement with a consortium of Chinese firms, basically to provide some seed money and to get going. At the same time that they're moving that forward, Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority has been preparing an environmental document for a high-desert, toll-freight-truckway, right, a freeway, to take some of our trucks, basically move them between LA County and San Bernardino County, not down here in the basin, but have them make those movements up in northern LA County. As part of that project, they are studying an environmentally clearing and a high-speed rail link between Victorville and Palmdale, where our station would be. And so, as part of that, we have been coordinating closely with LA Metro to make sure that if that project is built, and it looks like it is, that's what they're fixing to do, we will be able to have a direct interchange there at Palmdale. So, if you get on the California High-Speed Rail system anywhere, you would be able to take a train directly to Las Vegas if you wanted to. If you got on the Las Vegas High-Speed Rail system, you would be able to take a train to anywhere in California. So, it's really about Southwest region high-speed service, and that is very, very, I think, exciting for our future. And of course, we're very excited for them because any advancement of high-speed rail is good for everybody who's planning it.
I guess it's been talked about for, what, 30 years, so it'll be interesting to see if it really happens this time.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
We're gonna do it! All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we move on to public oral communication, I'd like to invite our youth commissioners to join us up and to sit next to their respective council members.
I'd like to excuse my youth commissioner, Robert Fuentes, who wasn't able to be with us this evening. He took off the last Wednesday, and his professor wouldn't give him another Wednesday off, so school comes first.
Welcome, youth commissioners, to the dice.
Can we have them introduce themselves, Your Honor?
We sure can. Okay, so, we will start with the mayor's youth commissioner, and you want to introduce yourself and say who you are?
My name is Abraham Iskacian.
And who are you?
I'm your youth commissioner.
Okay, I want you to state that on the record. And we'll now move to my left.
My name's Stephanie Gonzalez, youth commissioner.
And to our right?
And I am Elizabeth Gonzalez, youth commissioner.
Okay, welcome. And now, we will proceed with public oral communication on open session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the youth commission. Members of the public interested in addressing the city council on any agenda item or topic must fill out a form provided at the door and turn it into the city clerk prior to the beginning of oral communications, which would be right now. The form does not need to be submitted for public hearing items. Speakers wishing to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda will be called upon in the order that their speaker card was received. Those persons not accommodated during the first 30-minute period will have an opportunity to speak under oral communications continued after all scheduled matters have been considered. Be aware, the maximum time allotted for individual speech shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. Also, be aware, in accordance with state law, the city council may not take action or entertain extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Be sure courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the mayor. We do have several cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, I'm going to ask my youth commissioner, Mr. Abraham, to call up the first speaker.
Randy Baez.
All right, good evening, members of the city council and staff. How's everybody doing? My name is Randy Baez, and I'm here today representing Keeping the Culture Alive. I'm here with my vice president, Pedro Hernandez, and head of promotions, Ricky Villa. And we just want to give a quick update and let you guys know that last Saturday was an amazing event. Thank you to everyone who came out to the Montebello Art Fest. We had 145 vendors altogether who showed up and gathered all together in one unity, representing the arts and culture here in the city, and to let everybody know that the city is thriving with our arts and everything's alive and well. It was a great event. We had Go Green on the side as well, spearheaded by Jeff Cameron over here, and Danilo was out there too as well. So, I definitely want to give a big thank you to them as well for everything that they did. I want to give a thank you to the city of Montebello itself, and let you guys know that it was a great event. I mean, we have our pictures up on the website. You can go ahead and check it out. It was amazing. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Francesca. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Art. And thank you to the Wise Guys for coming on and donating their time as well. It was an amazing event. And we have little certificates for, this one goes to the city of Montebello, actually, just, you know, a general one. So, I want to go ahead and give this one to Jack and go ahead and take this.
See there?
Yeah, yeah, you can come and receive it. And I have another one also, and this one goes to Danilo Batson. So, this one, and it reads, "In gratitude for outstanding individual contribution and selfless team support during our second annual art fest slash Montebello Goes Green 2015." And Danilo was out there early in the morning with us, like, we got there at 7:00, and Danilo was there bright and early, and he made sure to make it happen. And this one's actually, yeah, if we can get Art too as well. Art, like I said, you're a big help and support in this one. You're the first one to help me with seeing this one happen. And this one goes to Jeff Cameron as well. And this one's on behalf of the Go Green event too. So, I just want to give a thank you to everybody, and thank you guys for continued support, and I hope we continue to get your support. So, thank you again.
Can you announce also that, starting again next month on the 3rd Saturday, you'll be back?
Yes, actually, starting the month of October on the 3rd Saturday, we'll be right back at the Daily Brew right outside. That'll be our next event. That one's going to be our Halloween slash Day of the Dead event going on. It's going to be called Dia de los Artist. And then December, we're going to have a Star Wars event going on too as well, so...
The hours are?
The hours are for the October one. I am, we're working right now to get new times, but originally, we're going to be from 6:00 to 10:00, so...
6:00 to 10:00. If you haven't had a chance to go out and see it, it's a great event also. A lot of fun with not only the art displays, but music and food, and a lot of vendors out there, and folks really been coming out and having a very enjoyable evening. So, it's right there in the corner, Montebello Boulevard in Whittier, and if you haven't had the chance, you should really get out there and participate because it is a great, great program.
Thank you, thank you, thank you again.
Next speaker?
Vincent Rivia. The next speaker is Vincent Rivia.
I'm back again, and it's nice to see everybody. What an event we had here. That's very nice of you to have such an event. But I'm sorry to come back on poor circumstances. We are disappointed, and I represent a lot of Mount of voters and the city with the way that 9/11 was handled. Mayor, we had a conversation, you and I, at the Wise Guys concert. You addressed to me that you stated that there was no one able to work on that, on those days, which wasn't true. Mayor, I asked you, why, why can't you, couldn't tell a personal friend? I said I would back you up 100% with the veterans' votes, but it seems that you had another event to go to, and you put the money someplace else for an Armenian memorial service that day? I'm afraid so.
Absolutely false.
No, I'm afraid that's what happened. You see, what happened was, is that Ray Chapel, and wasn't it Commissioner Yvette that came and asked you to have that event on that day? Yes or no?
If you'd like me to answer your concerns, I'd be happy to.
Okay, my concern is, is that they forced you into pushing this event. You fired two commissioners for no reason because they were doing what the community...
But you have to address the mayor. You can't address council members.
Okay.
And Mr. Rivia, can I stop you for a minute, please?
Sure.
For one minute. We can keep revisiting this issue as many times as possible, but the police chief at the last council meeting had stated on the record what exactly took place. This event was originally planned by the police chief. I have never, ever suggested changing the date because I had something else to do. If somebody told you that I moved the date because it was my idea, or because there was an Armenian event, or I put resources for an Armenian event, that is absolutely false. In fact, I would like for all people who were involved in this discussion to confront me at a city council meeting, because what's happening is different people are coming here and making these statements, but I will address anybody on this issue because that is absolutely untrue, Mr. Rivia. You know who I am, you know how much I have respect for veterans, because I do whatever I can to show respect. I love that community. But the problem here is that you are being misinformed by certain members of the community, and I really am concerned that you are speaking on these false premises, that I have moved the event, because I didn't move the event, and I don't appreciate people in the community still accusing me that I was behind the idea of moving the event, and I had nothing to do on September 11th. That's why I moved it to the 10th. That's absolutely false. So, we can once again have the police chief and the city manager state on the record the truth, the truth. And again, after they speak, I am confident that I will address anybody in the community that this was not my planning to move the date because I had some other commitment. Absolutely false. That is not true, Mr. Rivia. You know me well enough.
Well, we...
I had a conversation with you, yes, at Concerts in the Park, that the event was...
You can tell me anything you like, Mayor, but as far as I'm concerned, you've always stated that you had, that you were third-generation Armenian. I have never heard you say that you're an American citizen as well. Now, all I, and that's not spec, this is from me coming from hearing you, and I'm addressing that at you. So, this, you're not an American if you don't do this right, and you don't come out with the truth. I'm sorry, but if you can, if you can answer the truth and state the truth, then I...
I absolutely could handle the truth.
Then we'll...
I could handle the truth. In fact, I will...
Thank you very much for your time, Mayor.
Well, Mr. Rivia, I don't appreciate the statements that were made that I'm un-American, or I'm not proud of American. I am the police chief and the city manager here to state for the record. If you don't want to hear the truth, that's your choice, but thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may...
Wait, I'm sorry. You know, I have an American flag on my, on my car. I'm a very proud American, and for somebody to make a statement like that, that's uncalled for.
We seem to be revisiting this 9/11 issue again, and city manager Francesca Skyler, for those of you who weren't here at the last council meeting, I just want to give a little background. Kevin McClure, our police chief, has been helping me in coordinating various city events because we do have a current vacancy in the department. And the 9/11 event was actually planned by Chief McClure, and it was his advice to have it on 9/10. He was looking at it really from a prudent standpoint of city resources, since Friday tends to be, well, City Hall is closed on Fridays because of the work schedule. And Chief McClure, if you'd like to briefly address this so we can really clarify the error and the record one more time?
Yeah. And yes, I did address it at the last council meeting, that I did schedule this, the event. I scheduled it on the 10th, and I encourage, as I did the last time I was here, I encourage anybody who would like to talk to me about what went into it, why I did it, feel free to call me. I've given my business cards to the three gentlemen who were here earlier. Again, feel free to come to my office. My office is open, my door is always open for everybody. my door is always open for everybody. And I'd be more than happy to sit down and walk people through my thought process. But nine eleven is a first responder event. Is a first, that is police and fire. That is what the nine eleven event is about. I reached out to the first responder community throughout the state to find out whether anybody had held it at a different time uh, than nine eleven, if they'd ever held their event. There has been numerous, numerous cities, for whatever reason, have held their event, not on nine eleven. So, that played into my uh, decision, not to mention, as I talked about, which would take much longer to discuss, because I'm sure there's not many people in this room that understands, like Chief Amador and myself, what it takes to deploy on a twenty-four-seven basis, when you're putting multiple major events back to back to back. Not to mention, we're walking into the holiday season right now with Thanksgiving and Christmas. And yes, it is very important to me, as the chief of police, to ensure that as many of my officers get to spend Thanksgiving and Christmas with their families. That is important to me. And you know, this decision was changed in probably less than forty-eight hours, uh, from nine ten to nine eleven. And if it's just because I brought that out there, this event was held on nine eleven. This issue is over with. It never had anything to do with anybody telling me they couldn't be there, uh, or uh, were unable to make it. Uh, I discussed it with the city manager and others here on the panel, or on the dais. Uh, and they made it very clear to me that they would much rather have it on nine eleven. That's when I met with the fire department. They agreed to take over, use the resources that they had to make it happen. And that is exactly what happened. Where all this other nonsense is coming from, uh, I don't know.
Thank you. It's obviously politically motivated, um, that uh, people are going around and spreading a rumor that uh, I'm un-American and that I was disrespectful to this country. Because uh, the fact of the matter is, I'm very proud of this country. And I'm very appreciative what this country has provided for my family. And that's one of the reasons why I ran for office, is to give back, because this, specifically this city has given so much to my family. And obviously, these are politi- politically motivated uh, attacks on me. And, and you know what? It's actually comical how misinformed people can be, and how they will continue to twist the story. And for somebody to make a statement that two commissioners were victimized by the idea of moving the date of this event is hilarious. It's hilarious how people will spin a story to such an extent. So therefore, I thank you again, police chief, for stating the record. But apparently, those who are here making an issue are no longer here. They don't want to hear the truth. That's their choice. So now we will move to the next speaker. Would you please ask the next speaker to speak?
The, the next speaker is Ruben Baez.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members of staff. I just came by to say uh, thank you for supporting that, what I call was the biggest art fest I've ever seen in a long time, in local cities. Like I said, we traveled to all different cities to show this art for these, these artists, not only in Montebello, but I'm talking about, we had far ways to go. This year, we have artists from all over. We had a section with just nothing but Venice artists. There was a section there that, it was fantastic. They were from Venice. We had people from up north. We had people down south. But there's different types of arts. I'd like to also thank our brothers for donating the time, other Wise Guys. I do thank you for that. That was a wonderful event with that. I'd like to thank J.C. Brown, which is bad, I came after that. They donated all their time. All this was put on by artists. These three guys back here worked, worked with no money to put this together. I guess next year will be, I hope we have another one, bigger and better. Maybe we'll take a street instead of the park. So let's go ahead and uh, work on this and maybe someday you could help fund this put on. I mean, money comes out of our pockets and we work for that. But you know what? It's happy to see people enjoy art. So again, I'd like to say thank you for all that. I remember our first one. Christina was one out there before and bought their t-shirts to support it. She bought teachers from the t-shirts, first t-shirts, out there and bought them. Francisco's husband fell in love with the shirt, and he still wears it, I heard. So, I just got again, thanks to all of you. Jeff, it was a pleasure meeting you. I think you're one a great person, out there helping us all. Now, I what can I say about you? But being out there so early in the morning, it's, I want to go back to bed every time I see you out there. So again, I say thanks again, on behalf of a parent, a resident, and people who love art. Thanks again.
The next speaker is Tom Dutcher.
Sorry about the interruption. Good evening, everybody. Nice break from the heat. Uh.
By the way, I like the new look.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
You know, celebrating the ninety-five years. I want to look ninety-five. Okay. I uh, wanted to uh, first ask you which topic. I have two topics there, uh, that.
Mr. Dutcher, you have, you can speak on both, but for three minutes.
Do I have six minutes?
No.
All right. Um, a hundred years ago, the communities of Ramona Acres, now Monterey Park, Winamar, now South San Gabriel, most of Rosemead. The area called Newmark, boundary, Rio Hondo, Maple Avenue, Cleveland Avenue, Los Angeles Avenue, developed by Harris Newmark. Fourth place, El Carmel Tract, bound by Rio Hondo to the east and the south. East Los Angeles to the west, the Union Pacific Railroad to the north. The fifth place, Montebello, an area encompassing Newmark, but going west to Oak Avenue Boulevard, now Garfield. North to the hills. The sixth place, Rancho de la Merced, now northeast Montebello. The principal people walking their butts off, getting signatures, and why horseback or cart, getting the signatures was John Hyland Dutcher and Frank Olds. Others were favorites of a fellow up there in Ramona Acres. They got signatures and hired a lawyer named Burkabayer, Burkabayer, or something like that. Anyway, he became the city attorney of the city of Newmark. All these areas was the city of Newmark. They were sued by the cities Pasadena, South Pasadena, and Alhambra. These cities had backflow coming up out of the new fangled units called toilets. They had a heck of a bad problem. They wanted to make Garfield Boulevard as we know it today, you know, it was smaller than, it was like one and a half lanes and dirt. But it was going to be a causeway carrying fecal matter down into our hills. The people of these areas stopped it by creating the city of Newmark. They were sued and the city became Monterey Park, then Montebello, et cetera. And I wish I had more time to say these other matters. Sorry.
Well, thank you for that history lesson, Mr. Dutcher.
There's a lot more that's happening besides that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just in terms of addressing two points. One is, and the rules of decorum that the council, it's been in existence for the city council for years, provides three minutes per speaker. Uh, it's not three minutes per speaker per topic. Realize that if we had a speaker turn in ten cards, we'd have a half hour presentation. And the law does allow reasonable rules of decorum and time limits on speakers' comments. So while it may seem somewhat arbitrary or harsh, it is certainly within the law of the law of the state and of federal law. So, thank you.
Thank you. We now move to staff communication on items of community interest.
Uh, yes, Mayor, members of the council and the public, hello. Uh, today we have two announcements. And we will start with Rebecca, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff and community members. Uh, just want to announce and invite everyone to our ninety-fifth anniversary parade and celebration on Saturday, October seventeenth. Um, we actually kick off with the second annual Mariachi five K run, um, at eight o'clock AM. Everything is being held at Montebello City Park. And then that will segue into the actual parade, um, at approximately ten AM, uh, followed with the festival in the park from twelve noon to five PM. So it's a wonderful day with music and entertainment festivities, food vendors, informational vendors, um, our Montebello Barnyard Traveling Zoo, uh, jumpers. Um, we're featuring uh, Jim McDonald with the LA County Sheriff's as one of our ground marshals. And so, it's a full day, uh, packed with activity for family and friends. So we ask you to come out and join us. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, if you're interested in becoming a vendor, uh, if you're still interested in joining the parade, um, and filling out an entry, please give us a call at Parks and Recreation. We also have the information available on our website and on all of our social media. So again, please give us a call at Parks and Rec, uh, or come visit us. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And we have Deputy Chief, Dan Amador, this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and the residents of Montebello. I'd like to announce that uh, the Montebello firefighters will be supporting breast cancer awareness through the month of October. Beginning October first through the thirty-first, you will be seeing our firefighters wearing pink t-shirts with uh, the Montebello Fire Department logo displayed in blue. The uh, Firefighters Association will be selling these t-shirts uh, for uh, fifteen dollars, and one hundred percent of the proceeds will go to cancer research. The uh, t-shirts will be available at our fire headquarters while supplies last. Um, my second announcement is uh, the Montebello Firefighters Association will be hosting their third annual pancake breakfast. Uh, this event will take place there again at uh, our headquarters station, six hundred North Montebello Boulevard. The event will be on November twenty-first from eight AM to eleven AM. Uh, we are asking a donation of an unwrapped toy with a value of five dollars or more, or a five dollar donation for adults, three dollar donation for children to uh, share uh, breakfast with the firefighters um, on the twenty-first of November. The uh, event is going to initiate our toy drive leading into the holiday season. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I do have one announcement. I would like to personally thank Randy Baez, give a shout out there, and keeping the culture alive, because it was a tremendous day with uh, over a hundred and forty artists and hearing the Wise Guys play. And it was just tremendous. And so, Mayor, I do want to personally thank them, uh, for keeping the culture alive. And I want you to know, I bought some things there as well, so.
I, I did too. I, I got me a uh.
There you go.
I got an.
The starving artists, uh, yeah.
I got an Ozzy Osbourne uh, piece of artwork. It was really cool.
Yeah, the artists were tremendous. So we, thank you so much for keeping the culture alive in the city. Thank you, yeah.
Uh, before we move to the next item on the agenda, I received an email from a resident, and they asked me to mention this today. Uh, this is from a Montebello High School graduate. Uh, the news of a, of a passing of a family member or dear friend is always hard to take. On Sunday, September twentieth, in Brentwood, California, was the day that Montebello High School said goodbye to one of its former graduates, Jack Larson. Montebello High School graduate of nineteen forty-five, Jack was eighty-seven years old. The name Jack Larson may not ring a bell to many of you, but if I said the cub reporter Jimmy Olsen, you would probably recall the name. The character Jimmy Olsen appeared in The Adventures of Superman in the nineteen fifties. Larson was born in Los Angeles on February eighth, nineteen twenty-eight. He was of Swedish and Russian descent. Mr. Larson was twenty-three and an aspiring Broadway actor and playwright, when in nineteen fifty-one, he was offered the role of Olsen in the Superman series. The Superman series ran from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen fifty-eight. In later years, Jack Larson was a libertist, screenwriter, and producer. He appeared in several films up to two thousand and nine. In twenty-ten, he was in an episode of Law and Order, Special Victims Unit. The Montebello High School Alumni Association was proud to have Jack Larson as one of its supporters. Rest in peace, Jack Larson. You will always be remembered. And this was sent to us by Carmela Fontes-Hobley, class of sixty-three.
Your honor, uh, Mr. Larson actually was the grand marshal in our parade a number of years ago. I think Mr. Glassman was participated at that time. So he did uh, remember his Montebello roots and uh, came back and agreed to uh, be the grand marshal in the parade that year.
Thank you. So now we will move to um, the approval of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and, and youth commissioners. Any items a council member wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All of their items may be, may be approved in a single motion, with the exception of any item upon which a member of the public or a member of the city council is requested to speak. Such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. We do have one speaker card on it for the public on one item, number thirteen. And if I may, I'll poll the council at this time.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, I was going to mention that number thirteen, for number thirteen, we have a presentation as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Protem Barajas.
I have none.
Uh, Councilmember Romero.
None.
Councilmember Cortez.
Sixteen.
Fifteen.
One-six, sixteen.
One-six, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Molinari.
I have no additional items. Thank you.
Mayor Aginian.
And I have none.
It would be appropriate to make a motion then to approve item ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen.
I'll make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstention, any no's or abstentions? That's so ordered. And uh.
That will take us to item number thirteen, and I'll announce that. Uh, item thirteen is an update on the city's solid waste and recycling programs.
We have a presentation and a speaker, so.
Uh, speaker.
Would you like to call the speaker, please?
The speaker is James Brightling.
Uh, good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council, uh, city administrator, youth commissioners, and members of the public. Uh, my name is James Brightling. I'm the Government Affairs Manager for Athens Services. Item thirteen on the agenda tonight is an update of the city's solid waste and recycling programs. Uh, I would like to congratulate city staff and the Montebello business community for achieving a sixty-eight point three-four diversion rate in two thousand and fourteen. The various recycling programs and recycling educational outreach provided to the Montebello business community have um, are, are proving effective, by far exceeding what the state limits are for uh, diversion. So, this is an outstanding achievement. Uh, the city and business community should be very proud of this accomplishment. Thank you for your time this evening, and let's keep up the good work on recycling. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, we will proceed with our presentation. Sorry. You can start speaking.
Okay, there we go. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, um, here tonight to provide you with a brief update on the status of the city's solid waste programs. What we have, a little bit of background on, all of this started in nineteen eighty-nine with AB nine thirty-nine. AB nine thirty-nine basically uh, required that all cities and counties adopt solid waste and actually reduce the amount of waste entering landfills. The city's done a very good job in complying with this. Uh, since then, there's been a number of ordinance and legislative changes. Since then, there's been a number of ordinance and legislative changes which have impacted that. Under the city's current system, there's 13 commercial haulers that all operate under a non-exclusive franchise agreement, which means that all of them are free to compete openly for the commercial and multifamily business in the city. Right now, we, as part of that, they are required to comply with all of the laws and ordinances, pay a franchise fee and meet certain levels of diversion requirements. They're also audited annually for compliance, for both financial compliance and also programmatic compliance, to make sure that the programs that they're offering actually meet state mandates and are actually in line with the city's source reduction and recycling plan. Every year, they are also required to update a source reduction recycling plan that is required. Every other year, they provide a full update as far as what are they going to do? What are their requirements? How are they reaching out to their customers? What are their plans and how are they going to help Montebello achieve the diversion rates that are mandated by the state? Every other year, they provide a summation of the reports, how they've done in the previous year and what their goals are for the coming year. The original state mandate, as was mentioned earlier, required 50% by the year 2000. It has since been changed. And under the previous legislation under AB 939, it was based on a diversion percentage. Currently, the city's percentage, as was mentioned by the last public comment, is 68.34%, but that doesn't really speak to the whole picture because we have some haulers which are really actively doing their jobs and reaching out and working with their businesses to make sure that they achieve the highest diversion. In fact, we have some businesses that are reaching as high as 85 to 90% diversion based on the programs that they're doing and the recycling programs. And that's really a testament to them, working together, small businesses, small haulers, working together to really reach out and provide these programs to them. It's also the outreach that the city's doing to let the businesses know of the different programs that they're able to. Now, when you may look at this and say 68.3%, that's pretty good, and it is. However, with the Senate Bill 1016, which actually changed the way that the state monitors city compliance. What that did is it's one thing to look at diversion rate and say this is how much we're diverting from our landfills, but what they did is they took it to a different step and said, let's look at our target population. What are we looking at? And under the state's target disposal rate, which means their pounds per person per day is what they were looking at, according to the state population and based on Montebello's population and the goals that they're implementing, they, the state, has set a goal for Montebello, 8.9 pounds per person per day. Based on the programs that the city is implementing right now in our commercial sector, we're at 4.1 pounds per day. That's 4.8 pounds per day less than the state actually is selling us our maximum mandate is, so we are almost half, beating that by half. On the employment, that's our target, under our employment and commercial disposal rate, it was 28.5 pounds per person per day. What that accounts for on the commercial disposal is all of the daytime population, all the businesses, everybody that comes in, workforce, accumulates all of that. Based on that, the city is right now at a 10.7 pounds per day is what our last approved average was in 2014, because we do a year behind with the rates. That's 17.8 pounds per day below what the target population is. So this really shows that the programs that have been put in place, the attention by the haulers, attention by staff and working onto this, is really making a difference to achieve the state mandated goals. Oops. There we go, sorry. Another thing to think about is it's been mentioned about going green. And at the art festival, we had the Go Green in different areas. Well, the city has really embraced this concept over the last year and they've really taken it under their wings. We've done things, working with the website. We had a Go Green website previously with the city, however, it was a little stagnant, to say the least, but now it's really kind of being a working document. And on the city's website that we're working with, we'll actually allow businesses to go and take a survey, so that it'll allow the city to determine how is their commercial hauler doing? Not just, oh, I'm saying they're doing okay, but anonymously take a survey, submit that and give true, real-time feedback on how they're doing. It also helps us because when we do the compliance mandates, we take these surveys into account. So if a business is saying, hey, I haven't had anybody visit me in six months or a year, we can then do that and that becomes part of their, the hauler's compliance report that we develop for the city. Also residential survey on the type of recycling habits for residents. That'll help us to develop better outreach programs so that residents can really understand what it is and helps us develop what do residents want to see from an outreach and from a recycling point of view. And also there's a used oil survey on there, so that residents can find out the proper methods to dispose of used oil, hazardous waste, electronic wastes in different areas. The city Going Green Survey, one of the things that the city did on this is they actually evaluated, we did an evaluation of all of the city buildings. And we looked at it and said, what is it that we can do? It's one thing for the city to say you have to recycle or the state, it's another thing for the city to take the lead. And in this case, city staff really took the lead on this. They looked at it, we did the compliance, we said, you know, one of the things we're missing is some recycling bins. Went out through some grant money that we had received and went out and bought recycling bins for all the common areas and target areas within the city. So under desks, under common areas, most of the places where recyclables will be found, that's where you can find these recycling bins as well. There's also recycling containers that are going to be placed throughout common areas with the city, which we have looked at, so that it's not only saying one thing, but it's allowing people and residents that are coming to the city, if they have a beverage container, they have a bottle, it's not just throwing it in the trash, it's actually putting it in a recyclable area, which will then actually help increase and show that the city's taking the lead on recycling. One of the big accomplishments that we had was on May 16th, was kind of the official start of the Go Green campaign. And that was something that we worked on, it was kind of a renewed, a renewed approach to recycling. And of that, we had 23 vendors there that were all about going green. It was initial startup, a lot of the haulers helped us, some of our major sponsors for that were Athens Services, Commercial Waste, NASA, Servwell, where they all contributed money to help fund that. And what their donations went was towards raffle prizes. We did a thing so that all the booths, if everybody hit all of the booths, they got a raffle ticket, they brought it back and we raffled off a lot of money in prizes and very generous donations that was there. Heart of Compassion was there. They actually, we were able to supply them with some food. They had their members there that actually cooked food and was giving it out free of charge for everybody that attended. So that was, it was a very good event and city should be very proud of that event. It was a great, great way to start. The next area that we are talking about on here is the business and multifamily waste audits. Now, this is an area that in the coming year is going to be extremely important to Montebello businesses and to multifamily because under AB 341, basically what this did by the legislator is enact a mandatory recycling program. Not only as the state looked at it and said you have to divert waste voluntarily, now they're saying that every, every business that generates a certain amount of cubic yards, based on the type of business, will be required to have an active recycling program. It's not enough to just say I'm recycling, but it's actually demonstrated and the city is actually obligated under this to show how they are actually reaching out and working with the community. We do multifamily audits and also business audits where they're free to the business, where we go out and evaluate their waste streams. Are their haulers performing their jobs? Do they have other materials that they can recycle? How can the city work with them to find avenues for their recyclables so they're not throwing them away? Whether it be pallets or aluminum or metals or wood or other types of things that they're discarding. These are things that we're working with the businesses every day on. And just some of the findings that we have, 98%, and they're listed up here, but 98% of the businesses have cardboard for recycling, 84, and you can go down the list, but the bottom line is there's a lot of recycling that still can be done in Montebello to exceed the 68% that we have. So those are, those are very, those are very good and very lofty goals that we're continuing to look at. Another area that is of concern is electronic waste. Every quarter, every year, we establish four dates, so every quarter, we have an electronics recycling event where residents can bring their electronics and dispose of those free of charge. And it's very important because a lot of those contain hazardous materials or other types of elements in them that are not to be disposed of or thrown in landfills. Through an agreement that we have, we have a certified collector and recycler which comes in. They provide those services for us once a quarter. The next event is October 17th that we will also have and that's where they can go. We're also establishing satellite collection areas. It's one thing to have an event every quarter, but one of the things we heard was, what do I do with my television? What do I do with my computer between quarters? I just can't hold on to it. A lot of times, we heard from the haulers, based on the waste streams that we're doing, is that those are being thrown into the trash. Now we're disposing of those, the haulers now have that responsibility of how do they discard a hazardous material? So what we're doing is we're looking at establishing some satellite collection areas where residents can bring their electronic wastes and drop them off for free. The first area that we had, that we looked at was, again, Heart of Compassion, and the reason being is because we're looking at nonprofits. The company that we're working with actually donates a percentage of revenues that they generate from this back to nonprofits, to the tune of last year, about $12,000 was returned back to local nonprofit organizations through electronics recycling. This year, we're far, we're exceeding that of where we're going. So, you know, the, it's not just a matter of being a nonprofit, it's looking at what's contained. It has to be contained within an area that can be monitored. So that's what we're, that's what we're looking at for nonprofits to get that. And I would just let you know, from time to time, some of you may have seen some events that come up which are not the city's, okay? They're city unauthorized events. I can't say that they're illegal events because in some cases, they have pulled a permit with the Department of Toxic Substance Control. However, these are events that we do need to address. We are working with them on doing that so that we can track that down a little bit better. The last area I'd like to talk to you about is the city's organic waste program. And this is another area that is going to be vital in coming. This is something that was enacted under AB 1826, which is signed by Governor Brown in October of last year. What this did is basically required a mandatory organics recycling program, a way to manage organic waste from food waste to landscape to green waste to a variety of different areas. Anything that's considered of an organic nature is now having, the city has to identify, how are we going to create a system to recycle that and ensure that it doesn't make it into a landfill or another processing area? It requires businesses to recycle their waste, organic wastes, as of April 1st, but it also requires that on January 1st, by January 1st of 2016, that the city submit a plan of how organic waste is going to be handled. Now, over the last several months, we have looked at different areas. One of the things that the council approved several months ago was a conditional use permit for Heart of Compassion to start a food waste composting program. Of all the businesses, they were probably one of the most that had the highest level of organics because they're a food recovery program and that was something that they've been managing. We did training for their staff to help them and they are now learning the proper ways to compost and it's actually helping that divert their program. So with that, we will be working with the commercial haulers on certain food waste programs to make sure that the programs that are being implemented are applicable to everybody and that everybody has the same ability to do that. In a nutshell, that's kind of an oversight of the four major areas that the city's involved with with respect to their solid waste and recycling.
Well, thank you for that thorough report and presentation.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to hear that the city's well, well into compliance with the state. So thank you very much.
Your Honor, maybe we just, because this gentleman has been with the city for a number of years, most of us, I don't think I've met him, he works very quietly in the background with Public Works and the haulers, but maybe could just explain a bit of the origin, why you're involved, it started with AB 949.
Okay.
About AB 949.
Okay.
Yeah.
AB 939 basically, that's okay. AB 939 was basically established in 1989. It's called the Recycling Awareness Act. Basically what it did is the state looked at it and said, we have limited capacity for landfills. What do we do when the landfills run out? As we know, Plenty Hills, the closure of Plenty Hills and several others. At some point, you can only put so much garbage in the ground before it has to go somewhere. Additionally, over the years, landfills were unlined, which means there was nothing in to catch some of this stuff and it was leaching as it decomposed. Naturally, it was leaching into the groundwater, it started to contaminate several groundwaters. There's several landfills around the country and throughout the state which actually had leachate into groundwater and into other areas. Additionally, when you put something in the ground and bury it, it actually produces methane. So you had a capturing of methane gas and that was escaping, which was also contaminating groundwater. So some, in 1989, the state looked at it and said, we really need to reduce this and we need to find alternative methods for reducing our waste and finding alternatives for our long-term disposal. That's how AB 939 came up. It initially started as a lofty goal, is to say we're going to self-impose what the cities would like and what we think they should do. And the city was required to submit a source reduction recycling plan, which was probably about this thick. It's about eight, nine, 10 inches thick. And a lot of it, to be honest with you, is just stuff. It's kind of a plan of how we're going to do it. But that was the initial goal of what we thought we were going to do. Since then, things have evolved over time. Just as anything, we look at evolution and the city's programs have evolved. What we said we were going to do in 1989 are vastly different. We were talking cassette tapes and, you know, things like that. There was a piece of artwork, you know, that somebody made of old cassette tapes at the, Keeping Culture Alive event. So things have evolved over time and now we're to the point where we're looking at disposing of things and how are we properly managing everyday items? Things that we take for granted now, cell phones, batteries. The city has a battery recycling and a cell phone recycling program where in city buildings, if anybody wants to dispose of it, rather than go to the Best Buy or someplace, they can go to different areas in the city and drop off their cell phone into this, into a cardboard box, into a bag. It gets sent back to a company that actually recycles those for free. And workable cell phones, they actually use in many cases to refurbish those for emergency phones for battered women, abused children, where actually they program a 911 in there so that they can actually have a phone that at all times, they can hit a button and go to 911. So these are different things that the programs are using. We're really looking at this as kind of a, everybody knows the three Rs or have heard about them, reduce, reuse, recycle, but there's one more that, concept that the city's really implemented this year and that's rethink. And the city's really taken this on to, how do we rethink? And let's rethink what we're doing, how we're doing it and how can we come up with some programs to reduce what the city's doing? And it's, they've done a fantastic job in really taking the lead on that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, may I have our young youth commissioner, whatever, make a motion and a second for this particular recommendation?
Sure. So I will, I will ask our youth commissioners, I'll entertain a motion by a youth commissioner if they want to approve item number 13.
Which is to receive and file.
Go ahead, young lady, you're next to the microphone there.
I'll make the motion to...
Approve staff recommendation.
Approve staff recommendation.
There you go. And now we need a second.
I second.
We do need the council to vote.
So now, okay, sorry. Yeah, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to receive and file item number 13.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
I'll second.
There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No no's or abstentions? The item is so, that's ordered. And that takes us now to item number 16.
16, yes. Councilmember Cortez.
So I apologize, but I went through this very quickly and I have a question. Over half a million being spent, two particulars, and I just wanted to get some highlights on these amounts. First one is for Atkinson, Andelson, Lawyer, Reed, close to $300,000. I just kind of wanted a brief summary, if you can, what that cost was, if it was specific to one lawsuit, if it was specific to certain cases, or if it was a payout. I know there are certain things that we cannot disclose.
Would you like to answer that?
Yes, I wouldn't be able to tell you how many different cases. That's our labor attorney working on a variety of, of legal consultation for the city, so we will, we'll have to get you the backup copy.
Approximately, what is the timeframe of those?
Timeframes, these are for usually current month and month prior, so usually two months. We did have some, in the transition with Corvell, our liability, third-party administrator, there's a transition between Corvell and Acme, and so this could include some catch-up from that transition.
So approximately $300,000 over the course of two months?
Two or three. You say three?
Okay, can, you also pulling the backup, the whole payable to Atkinson and to, to the previous Kelvin? Is that who it was?
Corvell is a third-party administrator, so the transition between Corvell and Acme, there may have been invoices that would have been paid like three months ago. That's included here. So we'll pull the backup for this, all the backup for this particular transaction.
Great. Actually, can you just pay the whole, six months? Can you do six months' history on that?
Sure, absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And then the next item and question I had was, Zoll Medical Corporation, is that our medical group, 100 and, close to $200,000?
Maybe Steve Kwan, you have backup on that at this time? Without pulling the invoice, we, I'm not sure that we can...
These are just major ones, so I'm making assumptions that we would know these off the top of our head for such large expenses.
Sure. Councilwoman Cortez, I believe you're referring to...
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
I believe you're referring to check number 563299?
Yes.
That's actually purchase of equipment, cardio, cardiac devices for the fire department, and it was funded by the firearm association.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I will second it.
There's a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no abstention or no's, this item is ordered. And now that we move to our council orals, and that's Councilmember Romero.
Good evening. I wanted to talk about my specific areas of concern for the city of Montebello. I wanted to talk about current law about the ROPS, which we received today, the ROPS right here, and how the staff has had to prepare them for, for years, for, I believe it's every six months, is that, is that correct?
Yes, it's submitted every six months.
Twice a year. It's now going to be an annual process, so there'll no longer be added pressure on staff to prepare the ROPS. So I, if people don't know what the ROPS are, it's the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule. So, from Montebello's perspective, actually, I would like to say, I believe the ROPS will be prepared less than they are now. Would that be accurate to say?
You mean the amount of the obligation on the ROPS?
Well, just the fact that staff is not going to be having to prepare them as often.
Well, the fact that we don't have to prepare them as often does not necessarily negate all the work that goes in it, because with new legislation, we anticipate additional changes to the format and reporting, so, I mean, there's a little bit less paperwork, but we don't know what additional changes will be coming forth.
Okay. So from Montebello's perspective, I characterized the increased pension revenue as a positive, but the negative is that it's going to reduce our general fund by $900,000 a year, I believe that was the memo that we received earlier today. And having said that, that is not good for the city of Montebello, nor for the residents of Montebello. The negative is it's going to be a struggle for us as a city. It's going to, it's going to increase our revenues to our pension fund by, I believe, approximately 3.7 million, is that right? And if you remember, during the presentation of the recent comprehensive annual financial report, auditors identified approximately $99 million in current unfunded accrued pension liabilities for the city of Montebello, and approximately $19 million in unfunded post-employment health benefits, totaling approximately $118 million in unfunded pension and benefit liabilities. And these pension liabilities continue to grow every single year. It's a long-term benefit, but it's a short-term struggle, or perhaps it's a short-term benefit and a long-term struggle, I'm not sure which it is. But I want to remind everybody again what our city manager has been saying to us, we, we are also going to owe a $1 million bond payment every single year for the next 10 years, is that correct?
About.
On top of everything else. And that $1 million payment that the city's going to owe is going to begin next year. We have the Bleeding Water Fund, we have Parks and Rec, which are not revenue generators, and I want to state also that the golf course is not really a revenue generator. We've got a lot of ongoing litigation, and as Councilmember Cortez just mentioned, she pulled that one item, you know, millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars that are going out constantly. And it's been a real rude awakening for myself, as a sitting council member for almost two years here, that the city has serious concerns, including our streets, the condition of our sewers, our water lines, which have depreciated and exceeded the course of their useful life. We all know that. Our pipes are over 50 years old, and they're a huge liability for us. The city cannot afford any more liabilities. We've got tons of empty lots, empty storefronts, so I don't know how we plan to sustain ourselves. That's why I entitled my oral, "Rethinking Our Sustainability." Again, these things did not happen overnight, but we need to begin to address them. We need to address all of these concerns through reform, restructuring business practices, rethink and reorientate ourselves and our priorities regarding actual costs associated with all of our infrastructure and our, all of our liabilities. I want to switch to the DOF payment schedule of the $4 million that we will be owing the state. Even though we have ongoing litigation with the state of California, the law requires us to enter into a payment plan before the end of this year. Is that correct? The law's unclear as to whether or not we're going to have to make a large payment right now. We don't know if we can put off that payment. I don't think anybody up here can say that, I don't think, we don't have a crystal ball. This is going to be subject to Department of Finance discretion. And I don't know what we're going to do if the Department of Finance says, "Montebello owes the state that money right now." They've been holding, as everybody knows, several of the properties hostage, including Taylor Ranch, including Jimmy's Restaurant, which is on Woodyard Boulevard, and they're both in captivity by the Department of Finance in the state of California. So along with the $900,000 hit, we're going to be required to begin repaying that $4 million dispute with the state. The positive is the city's going to be getting $3.7 million to add to the fund of the retirement account. Another positive is the city will be able to move forward with the long-range property management plan, and hopefully, we're going to have that approval before the first of the year. Would that be accurate to say? Just want to verify.
The city is required to get the finding of completion before the end of this year. However, in order to do so, yes, we need to make some payment arrangements to the Department of Finance.
So, another positive is, by the first of the year, hopefully, we'll be able to use some of the remaining bond proceeds of the RDA in the redevelopment agency, but I don't really know how much is left, approximately. Does anybody?
There's approximately $4 million from the bond that was issued for, and remaining for Taylor Ranch.
To rebuild Taylor Ranch?
Yes, that's correct, to build Taylor Ranch.
So I just want to reiterate that for people, because oftentimes, we hear, you know, "What about Taylor Ranch?" So that's what's going on with that. One thing for sure is that the financial burdens of the city have negatively impacted all of us. There's a lot of work to do, but without any significant future economic development in Montebello, we won't have the tax base that's necessary to sustain the services like police, fire, pensions, that I was just talking about, infrastructure and programs. So while some people react negatively to progress and change, we all have to understand the importance of economic development, market rate housing, we have to try to appeal to some of the young urban professionals, we need some more mixed-use projects, hotels, that'll focus on, you know, the Generation X, baby boomers, and, you know, the demographic categories, and design our communities to accommodate those preferences, because they're changing. We got to focus on walkability, we got to focus on connectivity, somebody talked about that earlier. Access to public transit. The years of lack of development in Montebello have translated into a lack of resources. You know, unfortunately, that's, that's the case. So we need to plan in order to prepare for the future. It's already challenging, knowing all of this, but we sure have to rethink what we're doing, how we're doing it, what we're going to do, and our sustainability right now. Everybody wants quality schools, clean water, we want good roads, beautiful parks, shopping, dining, entertainment, recreation, but unless this is a business-friendly city, and Montebello does not have that reputation, people are going to go elsewhere. They're not going to come here. We just came back from the ICSE. We have a bad reputation, we need to clean that up. We need to change our image, and like I said, a lack of development's translating to a lack of resources in this city. So, we can, we can choose progress, we can choose development, and I said this before, or we can choose decay. But things, they're not going to stay the same. So, that's what I wanted to talk about.
Well, thank you, councilmember. I, I wholeheartedly concur with your statement, because a city has to have a good reputation in order to have the ability to attract development. And when those criticize and act like economic development experts, they end up getting in the way of development in the community, and nothing gets done. And everybody wants police officers and fire department, and trees trimmed, and streets paved, and all that good stuff, there's a very high cost to all that. So if you don't want development in the community, the city will fall back, and you need to contract all those services out. I, for one, am not in favor of that. So what you need to do is, you need to position yourself so you can sustain those services. So I wholeheartedly agree with you, and I appreciate you highlighting this concern.
And I am going to hold over my next item, simply because there's some information that I'm waiting for from the Army Corps, so we'll...
Okay, so...
And there's a meeting tomorrow, so yes, I'm going to hold this over.
I'm unable to attend that meeting, but anyhow, I want to adjourn this meeting in memory of, we lost a legend today, we lost Yogi, Yogi Berra, so we will adjourn our meeting in his memory and what he's contributed to America the Beautiful. So if there's a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second? We are adjourned, thank you.